All right. This time I'll call this rarely scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order. And this time you'll join me in prayer, please. Our heavenly Father, we ask that you guide our deliberations tonight as we work toward the betterment of our community and for all of the citizens of our community. We ask that you be with the victims of those who have had their homes destroyed by flooding or severely damaged by flooding in our area and in all parts of the country. We ask that you be with all those who have been affected by natural disasters such as the fires that are raging in our western part of the United States. I also ask for your looking out for all of our veterans here and for those who are deployed overseas defending our country, Lord. We ask that all of this be done, that all that we do be pleasing in your sight. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. We are glad to have you here. Thanks for being here. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation proclaiming it Judge Fernando Rodriguez Jr. Day. So with that, we'd like to ask Judge Rodriguez to come forward along with his clerking family. I think that would be appropriate to come on up and join us. So if you'll look kind of in this direction, because I think somebody's going to want to take your picture. But you know, it's our custom that we recognize people who've done, that are from Harlingen or live in Harlingen who have done really extraordinary things. And certainly, I think being appointed to the United States Federal Bench is an extraordinary thing. You know, Rodriguez is recently appointed as a federal judge. And I think the last time a Harlingen resident, maybe the only other time that a Harlingen resident was appointed to the federal bench was when Philomena Bell was appointed, probably more than 40 years ago. So this is probably a once-in-a-lifetime event, probably, for everybody. But my proclamation, which is Judge Rodriguez has had really an outstanding career and it's pretty much just getting started. Whereas the Honorable Fernando Rodriguez Jr. was nominated by the President of the United States, Donald J. Trump, to serve as the United States District Judge for the Southern District of Texas and was subsequently confirmed by the United States Senate, proceeding his commission on June 12, 2018. Judge Rodriguez, his wife Terry, and four children, Nicholas, Laniya, Nia, and Nella, now reside in Brownsville, Texas. And whereas Judge Rodriguez is native of Harlingen and graduated from Harlingen High School in 1987, he later received his bachelor's degree from Yale University and his doctor's doctorate from the University of Texas School of Law. Whereas prior to attending law school, he taught elementary school for three years in Houston through the Teach for America program. After law school, he served as a briefing attorney to Justice Nathan Peck on the Texas Supreme Court and was a partner at the Dallas office of Baker Voss. And whereas Judge Rodriguez served as the Field Office Director to the International Justice Mission, a human rights agency that secures justice for victims of slavery, sexual exploitation, and other forms of violent oppression, and led efforts to combat sexual abuse and sex trafficking of children in Bolivia and the Dominican Republic. And whereas during his tenure, he worked with the International Justice Mission lawyers, investigators, advocates by local governments to ensure hits and rescue, prosecute perpetrators, and threaten the community with civic actors that promote functioning public justice systems. Whereas Judge Rodriguez has received numerous awards in honor, such as the Texas Rising Star Award, Texas Monthly in Law and Politics, the Judge Ben H. Powell Award, Bob Givens endowed president for scholarship of law from the Erskine Texas School of Law. Whereas Judge Rodriguez has membership in numerous professional civic organizations, including the Dallas Bar Association, the Dallas Hispanic Bar Association, the National Hispanic Law Association, State Law of Texas, and has served on the boards of these kids. We not just cannot put any surprise to the past Pope Chapel, Iglesia de la Macia, the youth sports league, mesa de investigación judicial del gran santo domingo sobre extensión sexual comercial y trata de niños, niños y adolescentes, and the Red Department of Protección de NNA's vivas de violencia sexual. And is past Vice President of Richardson Homeschool Co-op, Trinity for Dallas, Grand Evaluation Panel, Fida, we got to name a few. So now therefore, I prescribe to the mayor of the city of Harlingen, on behalf of the city of Harlingen, extend our sincere congratulations for this Harlingen natives' extraordinary service and achievements. We extend our very best wishes for continued success. And hereby proclaim August 15, 2018, as the Honorable Judge Fernando Rodriguez Jr. Day and the city of Harlingen call upon the houses to recognize him for his service. Judge, congratulations.
I can't believe it. They're trying to line up that eight.
Judge, do you mind saying anything?
Definitely. Mayor Roswell and City Commissioners, and everyone here has been honored for me to receive this recognition. And this is more than generous in what's stated here. So I am really just very excited to be back in South Texas and in Harlingen and Kennesaw to serve as a federal judge in the next event. So I'm just going to spend a little time up here in the city as well. We are acquainted with my hometown and feeling so thankful. So thank you very much. I hope you'll be able to hang on.
All right. Thank you so much.
These are my two law clerks, Albert Whitmire and Thomas Sekula. So we'll be in chambers a little bit. So we do stay out of the meeting, unfortunately, but we will appreciate you all.
All right. Thank you. And welcome to you all. We're glad to have you here tonight. Thanks.
Thanks.
Item two is the approval of the minutes of regular meeting of July 18, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing that, I'll ask for permission to approve the minutes.
So who? Second?
All those who favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item three is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move, Mayor. Second?
All those who favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item four is the first public hearing, which is the comments from the public for or against the proposed tax rate of 0.588827 cents per $100 in value for fiscal year 2018-19. Now, Vida?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. This is the first of two public hearings that will be held to give the citizen an opportunity to comment either for or against our tax rate. The tax rate that is being proposed is 0.588827, which has been the same tax rate for the last nine years. This will be public hearing number one. The second one will be held August 22, which will give them additional opportunity to voice their comments and staff recommends approval.
All right. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak for or against the proposed tax rate. If you want to speak for or against the proposed tax rate, please step forward. State your name and your address.
My name is Juan Ortega. I'm from Harlingen. My address is 2401 Alani Circle. And I was set straight, my district commissioner, Mr. Victor Leal, on the proposed tax rate. I believe that's a very good proposal. And once I found out, in fact, I made the mistake of getting confused on that article from the newspaper, and they were talking about the county and not the city. But now that I found out that it's the city and it's not changing, I'm all for it. But I'd like to take liberty to, hopefully, I can request an itemized detail, proposed tax rate for this year here in Harlingen, while at the same time wishing that you all would be on the side of trying to get the port of Harlingen from actually getting something on the backs of us, the taxpayers. Even though I'm a veteran with 100% disability, I don't pay taxes, but I do know of a lot of people that would, can use some kind of relief. So therefore, if you guys can do everything possible to help them, that will be great. But at the same time, the one on the port of Harlingen is not very good because that's an infrastructure at the port of Harlingen, and they're supposed, if they want to get funds for the port of Harlingen, they need to sell revenue bonds and pay those taxes with revenue generated by, from those bonds or the infrastructures that are actually used to increase their revenue and not taxes upon the citizens of here in Harlingen, which will, we as citizens are not going to be using those facilities, but only the people at the port will. So it's not right or fair for us to be having an added tax, not only from the city, but the county and the port of Harlingen tax. So thank you and appreciate it. Now hopefully, you all can get me a detail or at least one sheet of paper, what it is that we're doing for the last few, 10 years or so. And I'm glad that you're keeping it at the rate that you are. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the proposed tax rate? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing. And this time, no, it's just a public hearing. Item five is a public hearing, solicitor comments from the public for or against the adoption of the city of Harlingen annual budget for fiscal year 2018-19.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a public hearing to settle the comments for the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 budget. Before I get started, I want to do another thank to staff for all the hard work and their efforts in creating a balanced budget that we presented to the city council on two occasions during workshops. And so I'm going to go through it briefly, since we've already seen it a few times. And again, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on the budget. So we started the process in February of this year, and we held several meetings with department heads in May and June, and we held two workshops with the city council in July, on the 13th and the 30th. So there is no increase to the property tax rate that is proposed and no significant decrease in any public services that we provide. So what we're proposing on the general fund budget is the department submitted a request of 51.4 million. We end it at 44.6 million dollars, and that is what we're proposing as our budget for the general fund. We're estimating the fund balance at the end of this year, fiscal year, to be at 17.2. Again, our expenditures for next year, we're projecting at 44.6, and revenues at 43.9. So we're proposing to take $723,500 out of the fund balance for one-time expenses, and those are listed there, six patrol cars for PD, some software upgrades for police and fire, and some library upgrades to their HVAC system. And we're projecting a fund balance at the end of next fiscal year of $16.5 million, which is 135 days of operation. Our general fund proposed expenditure breakdown, we have 72% is personnel services, and you see the breakdown for the remainder, for a total of 44.6. Of the personnel services dollar amount, 70% is for police and fire, with the remaining 30% for all of the general fund departments. On the revenue side, we are projecting 43.9, with 42% of that coming from sales tax and 35% of that coming from property tax. Our largest revenue and our largest cost for the general fund, we have the property tax and sales tax totaling about $27.4 million. And for public safety, police and fire, we're spending about $25 million, leaving $2.5 million for all other general fund departments. And that has been pretty consistent. And you can see throughout the years, the general fund revenues compared to public safety costs, you can see the, we gained a little bit here, but it's been pretty consistent. I went too fast. We are projecting a 4.2% property tax increase in revenue from property taxes, and that is not a tax increase. That is from new construction that has been occurring in our city. We are realizing a lot of commercial development and residential both. In our sales tax, we are projecting a modest growth of 2.5%. We are in the budget. We do have $2 million for street overlays, which has always been a top priority of this city commission. Public safety, we are again purchasing six patrol units, and we are upgrading our 911 software for both police and fire. We're replacing one unit for fire prevention, and we are funding civil service salary increases that was approved through the collective bargaining contracts. And we are also proposing a 2% cost of living increase for our non-civil service employees. These are our list of capital expenditures that we plan to take, and there's some of the ones I already mentioned, some of the ones that I have not, or I don't know the point of words to add. I can't see it. But we're replacing four dump trucks, and the HVAC units and the controls at the library desperately need replacement. So we're going to go ahead and take that on and take care of that. And we're also purchasing a new mosquito sprayer, fowl, I should say. So the total budgets for all funds, that includes enterprise funds, internal service funds, and all other city funds, we are projecting revenues of $74 million, slightly over, and expenditures of $76 million. And we are taking $2.7 million from various fund balances, leaving a fund balance in all the funds, even the restricted funds, of $30.8 million. And that is our proposed budget for fiscal year 2019. And be happy to answer any questions the council might have. And again, I'm very proud of the staff. It wasn't easy to go from $56 million to $40, something million, over $43 million. So they did a fantastic job. Very proud of them.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing as to anyone who'd like to speak for or against the proposed Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing and also just say thank you to City Manager and to the staff for getting us to this point where we, here mid-August, we've got a good, solid budget put together that reflects the growth of our community and also reflects a lot of sound financial practices, I think, that are reflected in how we operate with them being able to maintain the tax rate and have a good fund balance, which keeps our interest rates low. All right. So unless there's anything else, we'll move on to the next item, which is item six, consideration of possible action to approve an agreement between the Development Corporation of Harlingen and Valley International Airport. The city of Harlingen authorizing expenditure of up to $120,000 to assist in the construction of a metal canopy and related infrastructure improvements in Valley International Airport.
And we do have it all done here, and I know he's anxious to present this item.
We always are. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. The Harlingen Economic Development Corporation and the Valley International Airport have teamed up to try to help one of our growing businesses. FedEx has continued to grow in Harlingen. They added recently a new flight and added almost 50 new jobs because of that flight, handling more cargo. But they needed some help in making sure that that cargo is protected from the elements. And so Valley International Airport is taking on some improvements at the airport that will be used by FedEx and could be used by others in the future. And they asked us to take a look at trying to participate in that project. Harlingen EDC decided to, it was a worthy project. There's a very good return on that investment, and so the board has committed up to $120,000 for those improvements. And since all our agreements with expenditures such as these have to go before the city commission, we're asking for approval on that agreement as well. And Brian is here. If you need any additional details on the actual work that's being done.
What's the total cost of the project?
Well, the airport is investing $340,000 plus our $120,000, so that would be $460,000. That's correct.
Yeah. Basically, it's to sort of help them with this, basically, they doubled their capacity out there and started bringing in the second, bringing in the second flight. And so it's a huge increase to our cargo operation out there. And it was great to have FedEx here in Harlingen. And so I think this is a good, really good project for us to work with them on and to kind of reaffirm our commitment to their being in Harlingen at our, at Valley International Airport.
I'd like to motion to approve. Second?
Second. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve the list of streets for the street improvement program for fiscal year 2018-19.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So every year, the city of Harlingen selects streets which are in need of repairs and overlays them with new asphalt. The repairs typically consist of overlaying the street with 1.5 to 2 inches of asphalt on the existing street to repair surface failures, thus extending the life of the street. Those streets which have developed more severe failures and are addressed with reconstruction of the base material and then overlaid. Staff recommends that the streets shown on the attached list and map be overlaid and, if needed, reconstructed. Staff recommends approval.
So if anybody have any questions about the proposal?
Do you have a question on Hain? Will that be done during the school year or during the break?
We are proposing, we've got to go through construction, I mean, we've got to go through the bid process in October. Construction, we can, depending on the timeline, we can move that over, try to get it towards the end of the school year, if we move it up the end of the list. So we can try to get it done in the summer if that need be. But right now, we haven't really put it in ranking yet.
Because traffic is already quite hectic there.
Well, we'll do, Commissioners, we'll work out a schedule with the contractors to minimize disruption in that area because it's pretty congested during the school year. So we may not go out for bids in October. We may be designing the plans and specs in October, November, possibly go out for bid early January. So that would push us a little further out, possibly in summer.
Yeah, just remember Dixieland. Last year...
Well, no, we're going to continue because now we did the Dixieland, now we're going to do the Haverford section.
Yes.
Up to the high school.
Too. I think it's great, you know, we, it wasn't that long ago that we were budgeting $500,000 for street overlays and repairs, which was not enough. And now that we're budgeting $2 million, that gets us closer to a realistic schedule, and I think that's great.
Yeah. On the Haverford, if you drive out there and observe from the front edge to the entrance, the back entrance into Walmart, you'll notice it's a little bit more hazed and cracked than from that point back. Are we going to do anything special in that front section? Or anything where the trucks turn in, there will be...
What I've asked staff to do is look at a concrete apron in those areas. So that's what they'll look at. Not only there, but also on Lincoln.
Right.
Near HEB.
Correct.
As well. So they're going to be looking at that during the design phase.
During the design phase. Thank you. I'm excited.
Again, all right. Is there a motion to approve the list of projects?
So move. Second?
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign, motion carries. We're getting started on those.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Item eight is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading of the Men's City Harlingen Code of Ordinances. Article one, section 111-1, by establishing a definition for a community residential facility halfway house, residential reentry center, and sober living facility. Article three, section 111-62, use charge by establishing a category for a community residential facility halfway house, residential reentry center, and sober living facility. And article six, section 111-140, off-street parking by establishing a parking requirements for a community residential facility halfway house, residential reentry center, and sober living facility. African is Bradley Palermo, Forest of Church. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. Take the produce. Oh, here you go. I got to talk to you. The applicant, Mr. Palermo, has requested amendments to have our ordinance changed to establish a category and definition for a proposed sober living and facility halfway house. The city legal department received the request and expanded on the amendment to incorporate two additional categories for such facilities. The ordinance would be, or the first category would be a community residential facility, which is a facility as provided by the chapter 508 of the Texas Government Code and used by the state of Texas Pardons and Paroles Division to provide housing, supervision, counseling, personal and, I'm sorry, personal, social, and work adjustment training and other programs to institutional releases who are required by parole panel as a condition of the release on parole or to a mandatory supervision to serve a period in a community residential facility and release whose, releases whose parole and mandatory supervision has been continued or modified pursuant to the section 508.283 of the Texas Government Code and on whom sanctions have been imposed under that sanction, section. The second one would be a halfway house or a residential reentry center, a residential facility as provided by chapter 508 of the Texas Government Code and used by the state of Texas Pardons and Paroles Division to divert from housing in a regular unit of the institution division suitable for low-risk inmates and other inmates who would benefit from a smoother transition from incarceration to supervised release. The third one would be the request, a sober living house, which means an alcoholic and drug-free residential facility for individuals attempting to maintain abstinence from alcohol or drugs and which serves as an interim living environment after completing an inpatient treatment and rehabilitation program and before transitioning to independent living. As a note, all of these, all of these requests, all of these categories would require a special permit by divisions, except for the planning development, which is what they want, but it would require site approval of where it's going to be that planned development would be.
So that's what PB stands for, is planned development?
Yes. It would be a planned development.
And this could be a home in any subdivision in the city or any residential area in the city?
Not necessarily any, so it would give them the opportunity to find a location, come back, but we would go through the ESUP process and allow residents to be notified of what's going on and have them voice their...
How is it traditionally done in most other cities? If somebody wants to put in...
If somebody wants to put in a sober living facility, do they have to petition for an S U P?
Yes, sir. In some other cities, we found that for, whenever it's in a residential, triplex, duplex, quadruplex, they would use an S U P. But in some other of the zoning districts, for example, general retail or light industry, it would be allowed by right, but the planning and zoning board felt that every district should have the opportunity. Just because it's a business doesn't mean that residents around it would not want to know what's going on. And that's why they're recommending the S U P for all districts.
So there's a specific address in mind.
They, when, when Mr. Palermo came in, he had one. We don't know if that's available now. We started the process because we couldn't categorize it at the time. The area that he was looking at was general retail, but we don't know if that's the actual facility. It may not be available at this time or now. We have to go through this process first. And he understood that, and he was more than willing to, to wait for this process to go through.
Okay, so this is, we're just talking theory right now. We're not talking an actual business and an actual...
Right. A site, a site has not, has not been selected. That's correct, sir. We have to, we have to create it first, and then he can come in with a specific site.
And the halfway houses that we have here now, under what ordinance are they existing?
That is something that I'm actually researching because the zoning board raised that question as well. And I don't remember the last time, staff couldn't remember the last time they approved one. We do know that there is some, but it would be a similar provision to, to this. And we understand by legal that any of those houses that have already been approved, they already have conditions, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they already have conditions that the court has implied to them. So if, if they're in existence, they have to meet the parolee, the Texas Government Code, and so on. This would be, this would give us more direction and more authority.
This is just setting up a process to actually regulate and approve where, where these facilities are located.
Correct, sir.
And can...
And, and to, and to create a definition for them. That's why we, he requested one.
Because we don't have one currently.
Correct.
Right, so what would happen is, is that the residents within 200 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Would all be notified.
Correct.
Whereas right now, they're not notified, just a transaction occurs, the house is purchased, and it becomes a sober living facility.
Potentially, yes, sir. That, that sounds about right. We don't know of any that have happened.
The other thing that I had on here was, you know, I noticed that like for one of the, the facilities, it said that they would need parking for everybody in the house and all of the staff in the house. I assume some of that includes the off-street parking or the, the on-the-street parking. They get to count that, don't they?
Yes. At the, at the point that they would apply, we would look, we, we have to set some sort of parking guideline to start. We don't know the size, we don't know how many they're going to house, there's, there's other conditions that need to be met, but we needed to set up a parking now. And so we would start there, and then through the S U P process, we could work with them depending on where the location is.
And I'll point out a couple of things that I, I'm not 100% certain, but I'm fairly certain that there are more than one of these already operating in the city of Harlingen. And I've never received a complaint, and I don't know that anybody else has received the complaint. And they probably serve, or they do serve, a good purpose for the entire community because a lot of these people do need to be reintroduced. And so what I'm hopeful is not going to happen is that every time they want to locate in a neighborhood, all 27 neighbors are going to come in and say, "We don't want it here because we don't like it." They're already operating and sort of, people really don't even know they're there, but they are performing a service for the community. I know we don't want to become the Mecca for these things, for the, everybody to move in and do it, but, I mean, it's part of being a community is to help reintegrate these people.
Well, they put, they did one a couple, a couple of years ago before I was Commissioner, down the street from my aunt, 75 feet from my aunt. We didn't know it was a halfway house or rehab home, but we got all kinds of people that were there, and neighbors were raising concerns because you were getting all kinds of people coming in and out of that place. So it raised an eyebrow, and at the time, I did, I think I did call the city and ask them if it was clarified as a, as a halfway house. They said yes, but nobody had been notified. And my aunt lives 75 feet from that, from that place, so I always see people hanging out on the outside and walking up and down the sidewalks and kind of make the neighborhood a little bit uncomfortable.
I know probably two or three years ago, we had a situation where out on the west side, there was a subdivision, and they were, we went through this same thing. Does anybody else remember that?
I'm trying to remember. I know that the ones that we have discussed are the, I'm going to, I think they would be called assisted living, where you have people who have either disabilities or...
Right.
They're going through a crisis in their lives, like end of life, and so hospice. And so I know that we had one that was a, in fact, I have like three in my neighborhood, different types of businesses, and they're not really, and I don't look at them as businesses. They're, people are living there, and they have staff that takes care of these people, makes sure they're okay, and they want to live in a normal neighborhood. And so I, I kind of get the whole process here. And I've never had a complaint one, not a complaint one, but, but we had a group come to us, and they were really, but I thought that was going to be over in the Treasure Hills area.
That's where I was thinking.
Pardon?
That's the last one we actually...
The last one.
Yeah, that one was, but we had one out on the west side where the question was about whether they had enough bathrooms and facilities, and I don't remember what it was all about.
It wasn't for the, this type of facility, it was for an assisted living.
Right.
We haven't had any...
In six years, I don't remember seeing one of this sort. The only ones we've had are the assisted living.
But I think that for the most part, these are very well-run, yeah, and very well-supervised by professional people that are trained to, trained to do what they're doing and, and...
I, I kind of know how this works, though, is that once we send out that S U P notice, and then the, a couple of neighbors decide to rally everybody around it, then we're going to be sitting here with 40 people telling us, "We don't want a halfway house in our neighborhood," which I can certainly understand, maybe some concern, but we just, I hope we're not setting up a process where we just tell everybody, "No." That's what I worry about.
Right. Can you explain what a plan development, I mean, I'm having, what is the, because a plan development means they can build it, they can occupy it, they don't need a S U P. So what is a PD?
It's exactly, what we're asking through the S U P in every other district is that they need to provide us a plan. The plan development requires the plan already.
But define, I, I don't understand. So what's the difference between a PD and a residential? Because we're zoning a piece of property.
Right.
PD.
Right.
So is a plan development where, you know, we plan that we're going to have five houses and three driveways?
So a residential would, any restrictions on a residential subdivision would be by possibly dead restrictions. On a planned development, then everything is planned, what type of house, what they can do. We usually see those when they're like, Camelot is a planned development.
Camelot would be a planned development.
That would be a type of planned development. They have higher restrictions than a residential would, where only, you know, it's 55 or older are living. And then they have their own, they provide their own trash service, they provide their own gardening service, they provide their own stuff like that. So it's, it's planned at a much higher restriction than a residential would be. So the reason that that one would be by right, but the site would have to be approved because that also allows input, but we can't say you need an S U P for a plan development because they're already providing a plan. But the plan would still have to be approved, but that's the, that's the only one.
Yeah, well, certainly would, would be concerned that people just have an knee-jerk reaction to those of these. It also makes, that is a concern, but it also makes sense to me that you wouldn't want to have maybe, say, three of these right next to one another, unless, like somebody coming in and buying three houses, because then you're going to, and, and set up facilities in each one of them, and us not be able to say, "Wait a minute, that's, you know, you don't have enough parking for your, you know, the employees are going to be in there, the people are going to be in there." It makes sense for us to have a little bit of, 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 to regulate how these things, where these things are set up and how they're set up so that they, there's not, you know, so we're going, we can address parking issues, we can address the, the density issues.
Yes.
I need to open a public hearing, and then we need to, unless there's anything else you want to ask Rodrigo before we, there's still opportunity for discussion, but I need to, we need to have a, have a public hearing, and then we have the, the city attorney read the caption.
Correct, sir.
And then you call and decide what you want to do.
I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to add that one of the, one of the topics that was discussed during the P and Z meeting was that to set up maybe, that they couldn't be close to a school, that they couldn't be close to a church, and so that would limit them as well. But again, under advice from our counsel was that, our legal department was that, you know, those restrictions are already set in place by the parole. So it would be kind of like doubling up on those. So there are a lot of restraints to opening one of these. I mean, it's, it's controlled by...
I hope the church wouldn't, would not, I hope the church would welcome a facility like this.
That's correct.
All right, let's go to the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this proposed, this proposed ordinance, revision of the ordinance? Our hearing, now I'll close the public hearing, go to item B, which is consider a possible action to approve the ordinance on first reading of many of our code ordinances as already indicated, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
In ordinance amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Article One, Section 111-1, to establish a definition for community residential facility halfway house, residential reentry center, and sober living facility, and Article Three, Section 11162, use chart, to establish a category for a community residential facility halfway house, residential reentry facility, and sober living facility, and Article Four, Section 111-140, off-street parking, by establishing off-street parking requirements for a community residential facility halfway house, residential reentry center, and sober living facility, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
Is your motion to drop the ordinance on first reading?
Can I, I think, I'll make the motion if I want to ask a question before we vote.
I'll give it out, there'll be an out for any further discussion. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll allow it. Yes.
I have a motion, second. Any, any further discussion?
What we're, I, I just want to be clear on what we're doing, because the, I know the, the Planning and Zoning Commission kicked this to us. And they kicked it to us because they wanted to apply this S U P to the light industrial, the retail, and the other. Is that, is that the reason that we're looking at it?
Well, no, the reason...
I mean, I know that, but I mean, that, that was their concern, that, that every, that the way it was presented originally to them, all of those residential R1, M, and everything else, those had the S U P already in them.
Correct.
And what they asked was, is that they suggested that it, for the retail and the light industrial, that they also have the S U P.
Correct.
That was the change that was made from what staff originally recommended.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be clear on.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, the next item, item nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow two portable buildings greater than 144 square feet, and to family residential in two districts located at 1701 Lozano Street, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, HCISD 9th Grade Academy Subdivision. Rodrigo.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for two portable buildings to be used for instructional purposes in four classrooms at the 9th Grade Academy. The school expects to expand one of the main building in the near future and would like to use these portable buildings at this time. The proposed portable buildings will be located on the west side of the property and will be, and will be south of the main building. And you can see those, the ones highlighted in red. This is the driveway as you're coming in. The units are actually already there.
Isn't this a, this is a brand-new campus, no?
This is the 9th Grade, yes.
What are they using the, I mean, I know you said instruction, but what, what subject did they underestimate or...
The rate of growth is what they underestimated, because they've got more kids going there than they've got room for.
All the 9th graders go there.
Do you know the enrollment on that school?
I do not.
Every 9th grader in the city.
All the, all the 9th graders go to the campus.
Okay, that's kind of like, like what they do with Alamo.
Yeah, exactly.
And so they, they did advise us that they're, they're looking at this facility already similar to what they're doing at the Treasure Hills one. They're looking to expand, they're looking to make improvements, but the school year's upon us, and they're, that's why they're requesting this S U P to have this temporary...
Are they using them right now?
They're, they're not in use right now, so they don't even have life. They placed them there, and then they came to us for the, for the S U P. I guess they, they're, they're progressive thinkers. Their request was routed to the city engine building inspections, fire departments, who reported no objections. The planning and zoning department has sent out 68 notifications to the surrounding property owners, and we did receive two letters in objection. One of them was just an objection, the other one was a concern, citizen saying that some of the students may jump that fence and go over. The ISD resources that they have patrol, it's a closed campus, the likelihood of that happening is not there, but...
And they're supervised.
And they are supervised.
They've got cameras.
Yeah.
So the, the planning and zoning and staff recommends approval of the request subject to compliance with the following conditions. One, that the S U P would be limited to one year, and then it could be revisited and done over. And two, that they comply with the requirements administered by planning and zoning, building inspections, fire prevention departments.
Have they submitted a plan, or, or do they have a timeline? And I know I asked this Treasure Hills project as well.
Right.
Is this something we're going to set up for the next 10 years, and they're going to, you know, use them? Or are we going to be more defined, saying, "Do they have a, a construction timeline?"
At, at this time, in the Treasure Hills one, plans were already submitted, and they're actually working out there already. In this site, they have not submitted any plans. We have not had our developers' meeting yet, but they did mention that they're in the works of doing that, and that's why they're asking for, they had asked for two years, but the planning and zoning is recommending one year to bring it back and kind of encourage them to continue those plans.
So when they, they come, and can they give you, I mean, can you ask for that, or we do, and we don't ask? Because I, I know for me, it's like, oh, we're going to build that later, but when, but when?
They have, they have not provided, they, they just said that they're, they're working on expanding, but...
I'd say, you know, I'm, I'd like them to be in a permanent building, but these portable buildings have been a fact of life.
Oh, forever.
Ever. Especially when, you know, it's hard for them to predict what the growth pattern is going to be and what the student population's going to be, and if 60 more kids show up to school than what you thought, you better be ready. So I'm not, I'd like to see permanent facilities too, but I don't see us stopping them from using these either.
And I, and I take it from reading the, the minutes, I mean, they were, they wanted to, we gave them one, which means they have to come back next year, and we can at that point say...
Well, does it really matter?
I, I know.
I mean, why not give them the two years? I mean, we can override the P and Z.
That's correct.
Yes, we can.
Then just give them the two years unless you want to talk about it again.
Another thing, Richard, they, they have open campus now, so you can get, students either are attending our school or they're going to other schools. So it's proper to predict the, the numbers.
Right, right. Well, it just sells me off because it's a brand-new campus.
Yeah.
You know? In a way, it's kind of a good problem, I mean, it's, it's reflective of growth and the growth of the school district. Sometimes they have to dress, the only thing more, the only thing more interesting going than going to school in a portable building is going to court in a portable building.
Well, I mean, I like the fact that...
They have that over in Hennago County. All right, well, anyway, we need to open, I'm going to go to item A, which is the public hearing, the public hearing. So anyone who'd like to speak for or against this S U P? Anyone? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and then go to item B, which is consider a possible action to approve the ordinance on first reading, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Yes, sir. In ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit, S U P, to Harlingen C I S D to allow two portable buildings greater than 144 square feet in a multi-family residential M2 district located at 1701 Lozano Street, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, HCISD 9th Grade Academy Subdivision, subject two, limiting the specific use permit to one year. After one year, the applicant would have to apply for renewal of the S U P with no application fee to continue the use of the portable building. Two, complying with the requirements administered by the planning and zoning, building inspections, and fire prevention departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
I'd like to make a motion... I'd like to make a motion that we make it a two-year SUP because of the following reasons. I don't see us turning it down in a year, and it's a lot of work for you guys to go through and put all this stuff together and everything, so I want to make the motion that we amend what the P&amp;Z committee said, and we make it a two-year SUP as the school district requested.
My second. They require a four bits, four bits.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Motion, second, to adopt the ordinance as proposed with the amendment extending it to two years. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have, it's unanimous, so we have four, we have four bits of vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, consideration possible action to adopt for resolution directing staff to prepare service plan and initiate proceedings for the voluntary annexation of 8.95 acres out of Block 35 Petersburg Syndicate Subdivision located on the east side of Park Lane East, North and South 54. Rodrigo.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the subject property into a one-lot residential subdivision. Part of the proposed subdivision is currently inside the city limits. The east 8.95 acres is located outside the city limits. I believe I have it closer. It's not shown here, but there's a, there's a little gap right here. You can see on the packet. The developer will be responsible for all infrastructure provisions, including street development, street lights, water and wastewater, storm sewer, and other requirements as specified on the subdivision regulations. The developer has requested a single-family residential district zone for the subject property. The subject annexation will require three public hearings and two readings of the ordinance to be annexed into, into the city's properties, so we're looking at approximately 90 days.
Can you?
Go back.
Show us with a pointer, all that white, go back. All that white area is area that's not in the city limits of Harlingen, that's the Chester Park.
That's correct, sir.
Area.
Okay.
Why is that? That we, are we, have we thought about? Know something about that?
Okay.
Since the convention center's right next to it.
Yeah, we tried to annex it, well, some of us tried to annex it. Got, we, in 2008, 2007, it was voted down by the city commission to proceed with the annexation. And you guys want to take that on, so I'm all for it.
You have the colonial waters, right? You have the colonial waters.
Well.
It would be nice to extend fire and PD and all of those things into that area that we are basically.
There, there are obviously pros and cons to it. There, you know, the cons are, you know, we take on the responsibility of streets and other services provided in that area. The, the, for me, the designability of it is, is that we, you know, we've, we've got this donut hole in the middle of our city, and it'd kind of be nice if we had the direct, you know, I think our law, I think it'd be better for our law enforcement agency to be responsible for police in that area than the county. But at any rate, that's not really the issue. Although, the issue's going to be this section that's, that's adjacent to it, and that's actually with the voluntary annexation makes that other issue, potentially makes that other issue easier, right? So we need a motion to adopt the.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm, I'm noticing at the drawing, and I missed it when I was looking at it, so when you first drive in where Osborne hits that subdivision. Correct. And if you go to the back, so the next street down, what is it, Memorial?
Yes, sir.
So Memorial, I do remember there's a little section that's undeveloped, and that's probably on purpose to be able to push that subdivision further back.
Right, that.
So did I understand it's going to be a one-lot subdivision?
Yes, that is, that is what he is requesting now. However, we, through the, through the subdivision process, we want to make sure that he complies with any other requirements, that, another issue that we had, that he has when he bought that 8.95 acres is that it's landlocked, and so that Memorial extensionist was giving that, this tract the ability to come up, but we also know that all of these houses here only come in and out through here.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
It's a funnel effect, yes, sir.
I saw the drawing, why, okay, so we have a canal that runs.
Correct.
And, and there is no way to get to that land other than by sea.
Well, he, he, we have the access, we have the access here, I mean, he could potentially purchase additional right-of-way.
He would have to buy additional right-of-way, but I believe the, the right-of-way has already been pre-established back when that other subdivision was made, because like I said, it's an empty little.
It's, it's, it's actually the size of a lot.
It's the size, we, I, I, we have a lot of subdivisions around town that have that little piece of lot that.
Right.
It evens curb.
Correct.
Parkway. Okay. But I, that's what I want to do. So you did say just one residential.
That's what he's requesting, yes.
So, question, then, will we have to provide water, sewer, if it's not there, will we have to provide?
No.
Fire hydrants? Or is this his responsibility since he's requesting?
As the developer's, his responsibility, yes, sir.
So, so are we on the hook for any money?
Not at this time, sir, it's voluntary.
And to clarify his question, anybody that subdivides an undeveloped piece of property, it's their responsibility to put in the streets, it's their responsibility to put in the gutter, water, lights, street lights, and everything else, so that's no different from.
All infrastructure.
All infrastructure provided by themselves.
Yes, sir.
Not theory.
Right now, he's not building anything, he's just subdividing. He wants to be annexed first, the, the preliminary subdivision has been submitted, but then withdrawn because he wanted to go through the annexation process first.
Okay.
But even though, even though these are small, you know, small, voluntary annexations are good. I mean, voluntary annexations are great, because they, because they pay for, most of it, they pay for themselves. We have, we have, I mean, we're already providing fire protection.
That's correct.
But we can't, but we're not, we're not able to charge for it, right? We're not able to tax them what it really costs us or what the rest of the taxpayers cost us, so that, in that sense, it's good. Really, the only other additional thing we're providing is fire protection and, I mean, police protection, and they already get, they already have them anyway. And then the last point is that, you know, it adds to our tax base, this, whatever we develop, new development will be adding to our tax base, and will add that many more residents to our population count, in the sense this is coming up. And at everybody, we've been in every man, woman, and child. All right. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some, Mayor.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item 11, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I have none. None.
Yes. I'd like to reappoint Judy Crowell to animal shelter, Gina Condon Monreal to Harlingen Community Improvement Board, Norman Rosset to museum advisory board, Connie Salas to the senior citizens advisory board, and then a new person for the veterans advisory board, Leonel Zamora.
Good. Any, putting us down here?
Down in a second.
Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
So moved. Second?
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.